That clock's a little slow.
It's okay.
All right. Good evening and welcome to this work session meeting of the Kingman Common Council. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lingefelter.
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Wade. We have a call.
Thank you. All work session items are listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. The first item on our work session tonight is a presentation on water resources update and water sustainability projects.
Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager Foggan.
Yes, just as an intro to our subject matter, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we hit, I know that we had a presentation like this last year. We just want to make sure that we keep in the public's mind, as well as the council, what we are doing actively on a daily basis to take care of our water resources. And what my team is doing is they're doing a great job. As you all know, we participate with the county on a water task force that's been asked to basically look for ways to improve our water sources, whether that's through injection, conservation, or developing new sources. So the presentation that we have for you tonight, we feel is extremely important. Of course, our water resource allows us to remain a community. Without it, we wouldn't be here. And so we have asked Greg and Rob if they would walk you through all the activities that we've been involved with with regards to all things water. And so with that, I will let them, I think they're planning on tag teaming this, so please feel free to ask lots of questions. We want to make sure that everybody is well-versed in water because, of course, it is so important to our community. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Greg and Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Ron indicated, we kind of have a two-part presentation here. We'll go back and forth a little bit, but the main two topics we're going to talk about are water resources and water sustainability projects. I'm going to start with the water resources part of the presentation and then Rob's going to kind of complete that and then we will get into, he's going to begin the sustainability projects and then I'll complete the end there. So that's kind of was our agenda, but feel free to ask questions at any time as we're going through stuff because sometimes when that question comes up, it's best just to ask it right then and I'm sure we can handle some interruptions here. So basically, there's four parts to the water resources update. I'm going to give some information on the aquifers, some current aquifer legislation and some studies that are ongoing. And then I'm going to handle those two parts and then Rob's going to talk about the Kingman Water System and Mojave County Water Authority history and where we're at with that. So jump right into, City of Kingman has two aquifers that we draw all our water from. We have the Walupi Basin, which is kind of the north part of town, airport area. And then we have the Sacramento Basin, which downtown falls within the Sacramento Basin. We have four wells downtown, which Rob will talk much more detail on that sink in the Sacramento Basin. This is a map of the basin. I guess it shows up okay. The Walupi Basin and the Sacramento Basin are both shown here. The location of downtown Kingman is shown and it's right kind of on the line between the two, but falls just within the Sacramento Basin. And then just for information, up into the northwest of us is the Detrital Basin, which we receive no water from that basin. Walupi Basin, it's 1,212 square miles, has three sub-basins within its confines. The Kingman Sub Basin on the south, Walupi Sub Basin in the middle, and then the Greg Sub Basin on the north. And the sort of definition of where that Kingman Sub Basin falls in is essentially where Long Mountain is out in the valley. It's essentially about 20 miles or so north of Kingman, north of the intersection of Stockton Hill and Andy Devine Avenue there. So the Kingman Sub Basin, or I'm sorry, the Walupi Basin has 13 active wells that we have sunk. Most of those are south of the airport, north of the Butler area. There's a few that are actually sort of within the Butler area and Rob will get into all the details on the wells. The Kingman Sub Basin itself has a depth to bedrock and the reason bedrock is important is that's typically the end of where the water-bearing strata is. And it has a depth of approximately 1,200 meters or just under 4,000 feet. Within the Walupi Basin, we have annual precipitation across the basin of anywhere from four to 14 inches. The 14 inches is more in the Walupi Mountain area and it progressively becomes less as we get up towards Lake Mead. The four inches is up in the Lake Mead area. Within the Kingman Sub Basin, we receive about eight to 12 inches of rain. And the reason rain, the amount of rain is important because that contributes to our natural recharge of the aquifers underneath soil. Natural recharge at this point is estimated to be about 2,000 to 3,000 acre-feet per year. Again, we're going to talk about some projects that we're doing to try and increase that to keep the water levels up. And just for information and maybe we'll have a quiz at the end, but one acre foot is equal to approximately 326,000 gallons of water. So. And I didn't do the math as to what 2,000 to 3,000 is, but it's 6,000 to 900,000, almost a billion gallons a year is natural recharging in the Walupi Basin. Sacramento Basin is a little bigger. It's about 1,587 square miles. It also has three sub-basins, the Chloride Basin on the north, the Golden Valley Basin in the middle. And that Golden Valley Sub Basin is the one that the city currently has our wells in, as well as some potential future wells that we'll talk about. The four active wells that we have are all located downtown here. And the depth in the Golden Valley Sub Basin, because that's the one we have our wells in and the one that we're most interested in, goes down to about 1,300 meters or 4,265 square feet. Annual precipitation in the Sacramento Basin varies from four to 16 across the basin. Again, the 16 inches are in the mountain ranges that kind of fringe the northern and eastern parts of the basin. Golden Valley Sub Basin receives approximately eight to 12 inches. And natural recharge is estimated from 1,000 to 4,000 acre-feet per year within this basin. Moving on to talk about some current legislation and studies.
Greg?
Yes?
Just for context, for people who are listening, the city of Kingman uses approximately, what, 8,000 to 9,000 acre-feet a year?
Right around 8,000 acre-feet.
8,000. So the recharge in both of these basins that they're at max, at four and three, is 7,000 acre-feet a year? So we're, just for the city of Kingman, that isn't totally recharging, just with the natural as it is?
Yes, more or less, yeah.
Which is what we're working on?
Yes.
Okay.
We hopefully can increase that even more with some other projects.
Okay.
In 2019, the legislature passed House Bill 2467, which established Mojave County West Basin Water Users Study Committee, among other things. And they are working on a report to present back to the governor that's due on or before December 31, 2021. In 2018, the House appropriated 100,000. That was funneled to the Arizona Department of Water Resources and that was to hire independent consultant to study the northwest basins, of which the Walupi Basin and the Sacramento Basin are part of. And they have a report that is coming out at the end of this year, on or before December 31, 2019. And then back in 2017, City of Kingman entered IGA with Mojave County to basically hire the United States Geological Survey to do some scientific research and provide a report on the city, mainly the Walupi Basin. And we're expecting that report by late spring next year, 2020.
Greg, I don't see it on the slide, but what year was it when the city of Kingman, when we adopted the One Water Framework and when we created the Water Sustainability Committee for the city of Kingman?
That was 2018.
Okay. And they meet quarterly? And are they involved with all this? Is that right?
Yes, and we actually meet more semi-monthly. We've been averaging about a meeting every other month, so. This is just some more information on the current USGS model. They are looking to do a detailed model of the underground aquifer and all the wells that are sunk into it and how the withdrawal of water from those wells affects the overall aquifer and how we can increase natural recharge of the aquifer. And I would expect next spring, once this study is done, there will be a detailed presentation to the council to provide the results, the specific results of this report. So it should have a lot of good information. They've done some previous studies as well where they've identified depths to bedrock more specific in specific locations, which helps them again bring out those water-bearing areas and then gives them an idea of how much water is in the ground and how it flows together.
If I may, a big part of this too will be the model that's developed, which will allow scenario planning and be able to analyze the effects of different locations.
How, where did we obtain the information on the recharge rates? Was that in previous studies that they have done or those are just estimations?
Previous Department of Water Research.
Okay.
There was a DWR report from July 2009.
From 2009?
Yeah.
Is that, I imagine, a multi-year report, five-year, or study, five-year, 10-year to get that number or?
Well, so their report, and I can certainly make it available to the council, they actually looked at previous reports to come up with some of the, and there's been, since the 70s, there's been at least four or five reports that have estimated that natural recharge. So they, in the 2009 report, they had identified all those previous studies as well. And so we kind of just, and they all had a range because it's not really an exact science trying to predict how much water is going back in the ground. Depends on how much rain you get in a year. It depends on, most of the water, I would say, is recharged in our washes and near the fringes of the mountains where we have loose bedrock and things where the water can percolate in easy. So, but that particular information did come from the July 2009 DWR report.
Okay, and then this new study, we haven't received any information from that yet, any preliminary numbers, have we?
No, we have not.
Okay.
We've asked for it and since it's a federal government study, they are very concerned about releasing it preliminarily. I understand they have the lawyers in DC do the final checks before they release anything to the public, so.
Okay.
If we were to happen to get it sooner, I'm sure we'll let Ron know, who could let you know, but at this point, we're anticipating May of next year before we see any.
Okay, and these numbers could all be different once that, once the model is done, because it'll be accurate then, won't it, what our recharge rates were over that set number of, was it three years or four years? It was a three-year study. It is a three-year study.
Yeah.
Is that right? So won't we have really clear idea of how much is truly recharging and how much our efforts are going to change that? Or will it still be?
Well, I think they're focusing on the amount of groundwater in the aquifer and how it interacts with all the new wells from the farming and the city wells and all the other wells that are out there.
Okay.
I would hope they would at least touch on natural recharge, but again, they look at typically the soil conditions and how loose the rock is around the mountains when it comes to how that, yeah, I would hope they look at.
Okay.
Well, I think it's safe to say this would be the best information we've had.
Yeah.
Right, okay, thank you.
One more question. As we move forward with this model and it's used for predictive purposes, it's going to be very important, I would assume, to have accurate monitoring of as many wells as we can so that we know what the extraction actually is. Is that, is that something that is required at this time?
It's not required at this time. It's something that we have done, yeah, Rob's going to get into it, but yeah, it's something that the city has done and I think we're going to start like a quarterly program of the city wells to monitor that so we can start doing our own charts and graphs and estimate how much we're taking out and how it's affecting.
Excellent, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like a question. Between the two studies, looks like two, potentially three studies, we're looking at the USGS. That's the one that we actually want to hear from. We want to know what that one's going to land at. Is that my understanding or are we hoping to hear something from the other one as well? Something good, bad, or indifferent? Just which one are we looking at to actually weigh out our options more so?
Well, I think we'll look at, we haven't seen, we haven't seen the other study that's going on with 100,000 appropriation, but I think we're going to look at whatever studies are out there and review them accordingly. But I think my understanding is the USGS study is going to be the most accurate groundwater model that anyone has done to date in the Walupi Basin, so, yeah. So, yep, it's Rob's turn. Oh, no, well.
Well, you'll notice that the graphics get a little bit uglier now that they're my slides, but, so the Walupi Basin, again, and these are the ranges and DWR cites four or five different studies. So the low range was 3.8 million acre-feet in storage. The high range was 10.1. So to go back to the mayor's comment on well soundings, so these are soundings that we've done in, that were done in 2018, which reflects across our Walupi Basin wells, a decline of average of 2.94 feet per year. And that's not very different. I think last time we did our water report a few years ago, we were using the amount of two feet per year was kind of our traditional drawdown at our well site. But as part of this, you know, we are initiating a quarterly well sounding program for all of our. Again, we have the four wells in the Sacramento Basin downtown. The estimated range of storage for those is 3.6 to 14 million acre-feet. Those are much shallower wells and the average decline in those, half a foot per year, just on the ones that were sounded in 2018. Just a brief overview of the water system. We have 13 active wells, 13 storage tanks, five booster stations, close to 500 miles of pipe, just under 21,000 meter connection. This is our well inventory. This is the Walupi Basin wells. Generally, they're going to be bigger capacity, bigger producers. These wells are deeper, generally around 1,000 feet. Pumps usually set somewhere around here, so. These are the other ones in Walupi Basin. City Well 10 is currently in design. Would be a new well that's south of the airport. It's planned to be 2,300 gallons per minute well capable of using point of view. So the downtown wells are in Sacramento Basin. They're shallower, they're slower, they're lower producer. This is from the Water Master Plan Update. This shows our average daily demand of just under 6 million gallons a day. You notice there's a pretty good, significant spike in the summer months, July and August. It's the time of year sometimes when we have troubles keeping up with the demand in the system. Some of that we're experiencing right now. So based upon that 5.9 million gallons a day for average daily demand, running at full capacity, the Sacramento Basin wells could produce just a little under 1 million gallons a day. Again, just as an example, one well on the City Well 10 will just 2.3. So at full capacity for the Sacramento wells, that would be 16% overall average daily demand. This again is from the Water Master Plan Update, just shows the projected growth in the system at 2.5%. So Kingman was really fortunate back in the 90s to have some visionary leaders. In the 90s, Kingman had Colorado River water allocation of 18,500 feet. But that was, we were at a use it or lose it state. So if we're not going to use that, that was going to be reallocated back to the other users. So this was back when Carol Anderson was mayor and Board Supervisor did at that time, initiated the creation, went to the state legislature to get authorization to create the Mojave County Water Authority to allow us to sell our allocation, keep those, keep that allocation in Mojave County and sell it to the other users down on the river. And so that's been a big source of funding for, and as we go through our projects, to be able to see that we've been able to use those funds to develop new water sources. Again, these are the totals of oversold to the other users down on the river and down in that table is kind of the remaining contracts. Just as a side note, I think we received a large payment from Bullhead City, vinyl payment. So water sustainability projects, so these are projects passed. Again, so these were funded with Colorado River water, our sale of our Colorado River allocation. So it was a lot of, in this, so beginning back in the 90s, this was a lot of well site analysis, helping us identify well sites, hydrogeologic consulting, well drilling and quipping for City Well 7 and 11, master plan update in 2004, Airport Basin Study. There were several large projects that were funded with those funds. So projects present, and we, so these are the water projects and this is my kind of pet little symbol here, this One Water, because it really is One Water. And, you know, we've got One Water projects and water and wastewater and stormwater. I think as a society, we're at the point where we're going to use every drop at any time. So some of the big projects we have here, so meter testing and we are conducting our initial meter testing program right now, replacing 50 meters with radio read meters, trying to come up, we've gone through and prioritize them based on water throughput through the meter along the page, be able to use that information to prioritize further replacement. On the wastewater projects, you'll see a lot of these, again, these are all current projects. And I know we've had this discussion at council many times in the past about, you know, the more people we can get onto the sewer system, the more affluent we're treating that hilltop plant, the more that we could be able to recharge in the future back and forth. So downtown sewer outfall line, probably dollar-wise, is the biggest project as to rebuild the outfall lines down to the downtown plant. There are several, probably the largest project or most impactful project for this discussion is the reclaimed water recharge well. So the initial bore hole has been drilled. Drillers will be coming back in a few weeks to commence drilling on the rest of the well. That'll be 700 feet deep. Once they drill it, we have a series of tests and sampling to do to allow us to complete the design for outfitting that well. But right now, plant production's 1.65 million gallons a day. If we're able to recharge that amount somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200 acre-feet a year, we'll be recharging. And again, we would, this project would be able to continue to expand as the capacity of the treatment plant expands. So as we were getting more water in and treating, able to recharge more out.
I have a question. I've heard conflicting stories as to whether or not we know how much time it will take for that water to get from that 700-foot level down into the aquifer. Is that true? I mean, do we know or?
Well, I think some of that's going to depend on some of the testing that we're going to do once the hole is completed, but 700 feet is great to the aquifer. That's about where most of our pumps drawing well out.
Okay. Okay, because it seems like some people are planning on, it's just going to go right in and then they're going to put in their farm and take it out and it'll be a, you know, wash.
This site was selected is that it's convenient that it's their treatment plan. We weren't pumping it halfway across town.
Right.
But this is kind of centrally located in our well field, so, you know, this is going to have the most direct impact on our well as far as supplement of water.
For the city?
Yes.
Not for the agriculture on the other side?
If there are farm wells right there, they would benefit too, but the bigger operations probably are probably less.
Okay.
Well, and just to clarify too, so the recharge well is actually going to drill a casing down into just above the aquifer. We're going to, that water's going to go right there, whereas if rain were to fall and drown, you have to go through that 700 feet. I've heard conflicting stories too, everywhere seven to 70 years, so.
Right.
This is going to hopefully put that back in the aquifer in a matter of minutes once the pumps are.
Okay, so minutes, okay. That's much more exciting than 70 years, right? Okay.
And that's entering this whole project that was part of the rationale, because there are other methods to do it with rapid infiltration basins or data zone wells, but again, they take longer to recharge. Still going to have some of that evapotranspiration happen.
Okay.
Could I add just a comment here? I was at a Mojave County Water Authority meeting with the DWR, Arizona Department of Water Resource representative there and toward the end of the meeting, I just was talking about the recharge basins and our injection well. And this representative looked at me and said, "But you're not an AMA." And I said, "No, but we're doing the right thing and we've been doing it for years." And they were just like, "That is wonderful." And so it's really very positive what this well represents. But I do have a question. If you're putting it down at 700 feet and the aquifers are going down to about 4,000, how much of that is potable? How much of that 4,000 feet do we think we really can use before it gets too salty?
Well, that's the question. I don't know that there's any real good data out there. I've heard, once we get below 1,200 feet, water becomes salty. I tend to think that's more out by Red Lake.
Okay.
Because we know there's known salt deposits under Red Lake.
Right.
I've still heard that it becomes a little briny even in Kingman Sub Basin, so that's something that most of our pumps are sitting down there, yeah, at 7, 800 feet. So there's 3, 400 feet of water. I don't, we don't have the answer.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Rob. Rob, and this might be a stupid question, but, you know, we have people asking us all the time, "How come our sewer rates are so expensive?" As we have more people, as more homes are built, more people hook on to the sewer system, does that help diffuse that cost any or is it because there's more out, more throughput? It's going to cost the same anyway?
No, I think it will definitely help. I mean, the reason the rates are so high is I mean, the reason the rates are so high is because we did two major plant upgrades at the same time.
Sure.
Had to take out a billion dollars of debt. But, yeah, obviously the more people that are on the system paying that, the quicker that the.
It should help diffuse the cost a little bit. Would, would we ever see a reduction?
You would have to ask Ms. Blom.
Okay. Just, you know, we have, citizens asking that kind of stuff.
I think I'd say, I'd benefit from that, to get more people in the sewer, potentially more water.
True. And that's what he was, that's what you were mentioning in your report too, is throughput. So, okay.
So some of the stormwater sustainability projects we're working on, these are the ones that, again, are funded this year. The big one we did last year was the Monsoon Park Infiltration Basin. That was a successful project. I think that, that this is something that we talk about a lot at the Water Sustainability Committee, is these kinds of stormwater recharge projects. They're not going to have the singular impact that the recharge well at the plant would, you know, could have a cumulative effect. It can also help us defray some of our maintenance costs that we had after a storm event, like we're picking up dirt in one place and moving it back to another and redoing that every time it rains. So I think there's a lot of potential for these stormwater recharge projects. Future projects.
So we have some Mahavi County projects that we've been talking about at our Water Sustainability Committee. We have some well sites in Golden Valley and then groundwater infiltration basin that, the one that Rob showed is just one of several other projects that we could look at doing. Drywells are another option. And then updating our policies and procedures to require development to put some of these things in is certainly something we're going to consider bringing to council as well in the future. This is just a list of the, the county projects here. They're talking about a flood control basin out in the Valley Vista area, which would provide some infiltration. They have some areas west of town with their identifying as the Kingman Area West and the Peacock Mountain shallow infiltration basins. Again, just infiltration basins to essentially dig a hole in the ground and capture the storm runoff and then allow that to infiltrate back into the aquifer. There's some farming on some of the farmers up there. They've actually indicated that they're willing to build some infiltration basins on their properties to capture storm runoff and to try and help the basin. And then the last one the county is considering is a Bank Street High School infiltration basin, somewhere there near the Mahavi Channel, north of the school.
Craig, if I may ask you a question. There, there was a time when Nick Haunt, who's the Chair of our Water, Kingman Water Sustainability Committee, he testified before the city council that in the Wallop Bay area, a little east of town, maybe close to the Rancho project, that if we were to do a passive recharge basin or a few recharge basins there, that such a project would be able to capture a significant percentage of Kingman's annual usage and also prevent flooding downstream on Bank Street and places like that. Is that included in one of those as well?
So we took that one off the list because I had a conversation with Nick just last week and apparently, and it may still be a future project, but it's not, it's not, it's been pulled off the county's list of current projects at this point.
Is that something that the city would still want to entertain? How much, I forget the percentage of Kingman's annual water use that he said that that could, that that could capture, but I remember it being kind of significant.
Yeah, I think, in fact, at a discussion today with Ron, we were talking about the development east by the Rancho Parkway and perhaps a regional detention basin in that area.
Yeah. Do you remember how much water could recharge?
Um, I, no. The only, the only numbers I remember that Nick had was the 20% for the injection well that I recall him throwing out.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah. I think that if there's an opportunity, absolutely to kind of kill two birds with one stone, if we could recharge that water and eliminate all the flooding down by the Bank Street and.
I think we're certainly open to any options and possibilities out there, so. Next was the Golden Valley well sites. City owns 39 approximately one acre well sites out in the Golden Valley area. And these were earmarked, I believe, back in the mid to late 90s and city acquired them then. So I think one of the things we would need to do is probably do a well sighting study which would identify the well sites with the biggest thing potential for providing the most water and getting it back to the city at the least amount of cost. And there's other things they look at, such as how close is power to run the pumps and does the right of way exist to, to run the water lines back to town? So it is definitely feasible to drill some well sites and pump the water back to the city of Kingman. Say that likely be fairly expensive endeavor to get into, but that's certainly an option that, again, I think all options are on the table at this point when it comes to water and the future of the city. And we certainly don't want to glance over this one. But I think at some point, we're, we're talking about, and sooner than later, getting a well sighting study out there, which would look at probably some of the other wells and how much water they can pump and then looking at our well sites that might be close, close to them and again, close to power and close to right of way. Infiltration basins. Basically, you know, infiltration basin is just a, a hole in the ground, a depressed area to collect storm runoff. So we get the benefit when we build these of reducing the peak flows that sometimes wash out our roads and then the additional benefit of some, some groundwater recharge that can occur with them. The Monsoon Park Basin that was, was recently built, now that, that was a grass area that likely wasn't infiltrating much. It was kind of more designed to detain water, to collect the runoff at its peak flow and then slowly allow it to trickle out. The new work that's been done, we actually, we dug a hole about 18 feet deep and surrounded it with a fabric to keep the fine sediments from the soils from coming in and clogging up the rock that got poured in the middle. And it was taken down to a sandy layer of soil so that as that water comes in from the top, it can kind of filter through the fabric and filter through the rock and get back to that sandy layer and get hopefully into the system sooner than seven or 70 years, whatever, whatever the number is. But these type of basins work best when we do have underlying soils that are loose, unconsolidated materials such as sand and gravel. So typically what we do when we want to design one of these is we get a geotechnical company to come in with a drill rig and they drill down and they core the soil and they get, they analyze that soil and come up with the best area to, to allow that bottom of that leach field to, essentially that's what it is, is a leach field. Drywells are another option. Drywells are typically involve some sort of underground structure. There's usually something on the surface that collects the water. Sometimes it has to clean that water or have sedimentation area where sediment gets posited out. And in this case, that's the, the one on the left of, the right of the slide is the kind of the sediment chamber and then it has a pipe that allows relatively clean water to flow into the infiltration chamber, which typically goes down somewhere to that sandy gravelly layer where we got a good percolation rate. Drywells are common in the Phoenix area. They're common in the Southern California area. Haven cities such as Victorville and Hesperia over there, they require drywells in their developments. Just as a note, I, as I was doing some internet searching for this presentation, I came across 60, there's 65,000 drywells in the, in the valley area down in Phoenix. So a lot of drywells. They are, of course, are an AMA, so they have it as a requirement of their development. When the developer comes in, they have to put these drywells in. But it may be something that we have to institute here in Kingman. These drywells are required to be registered by the State of Arizona and they're regulated under the Aqua Protection Program, so.
Would these be in the place of a retention pond? Where you'd kind of have a, like a retention pond, but you, you have something underneath?
Yes.
Exactly how it works?
Yeah, exactly. So here's the picture. This, this area here, it's a grassy area and it's, it's a depressed kind of detention pond area. But you have the, the manhole frame there on the right of the slide, which has the grate on it, which allows the water to come in. And then it has some sort of sedimentation basin there and then it takes the cleaner water over to where the drywell is and allows it to go percolate into the ground. So, yeah, typically they are and we have a lot of existing retention detention basins in the city. And they certainly can be retrofitted with these, these drywells in them as well.
And then you're recommending that going forward, in these new developments, we would require them to take the extra step of putting the drywell in and, and that would help move the water down towards our aquifer.
It's, yeah, as, as I said, it's, it's a common requirement. It's a, it's a necessary requirement.
I think that's really smart.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to tag team off of Councilwoman Staley's question. So is it actually, it's required? Because she was saying it's a suggestion. Is it actually required for our new construction and new business that they have to do?
Not in the city of King, only in, right now in the valley and some other areas around the state.
Okay, so something that we should, okay, okay.
Great. How deep are those wells usually, for example, to the diagram you had there?
They can go down several hundred feet.
Really?
Yeah. They typically don't take them to directly into the aquifer level, but they take them to the area which is called the Vado Zone, which is the area below the ground surface and above the groundwater aquifer. So typically there's, again, there's a, there's a geotechnical boring equipment that comes and cores a hole down and they analyze the soil and they make a recommendation on how deep it needs to go. There's a design that goes with them.
Let's do it.
And we're hoping to, there's, there's a contractor in the valley that, that does a lot of these. We're hoping to bring them up to Kingman. One of the things they do is they come up and they give brown bag lunches on, on how these things go in. So we're hoping to, we're actually trying to get that scheduled towards the end of this one, so. I could probably even answer that more detail on your question sometime in a future council meeting. But typically they, they do a design, they do a bore and they, they do a design and they go down somewhere as in the strata that's, allows the water to go in relatively easy.
Can we just pick up just a little bit?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Yep, my apologies. So final on the, on the list is some future plans and policies. We are looking to update our master drainage plan. We have capital project this year to do that. That would prominently identify flood control projects, which could include infiltration projects or other type of drywell projects. Where we would institute the requirements for new development would be in the Drainage Design Administrative Manual. So that, again, we're looking to do that in conjunction. Probably these first three items on the list kind of go together. The stormwater fee study, there was a budget item for that, the capital project for that. So basically the stormwater fee study would take the capital projects that are generated in the master drainage plan update and then assign some cost to those and then assign some sort of user fee to, to all the, all the people in Kingman, based on the capital project cost. Some of the things the Water Sustainability Committee has been talking about is reclaim used priority water policy. And we've been, the injection well has, has been their primary recommendation just because of the near immediate benefit to the aquifer with that project. But I think we're going to look at perhaps other items, kind of going into the water conservation program and perhaps coming up with some policies on large water users. And do we want to limit the amount of industrial development and, and the amount of water they might use on an average given day? You know, you know, something like a paper processing plant uses a tremendous amount of water. So that is a policy that we're likely to have to come here and talk about and, and maybe not popular for economic development, but maybe necessary just to preserve, protect the water supply. And then.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
On that point, I understand that currently the industrial use of all the waters in this county is like 6% water usage. So I think the county has been very conservative in the industries that we have brought in. And I do, I certainly glad from the forward policy like that, but I think we need to understand, the public needs to understand that transportation, logistics and the industries that we have at the park are very low water users because, yes, you're right, you don't, can't really sustain people here. But it's important. Thank you.
And I think even the, the fiberglass plant out there was using about a million gallons a day when they were in service several years ago.
I think it's certainly one factor that our economic development folks look at when they're looking at a project information form. The real problem, as everybody knows, is the large scale commercial ag and that's what the model hopefully will help us with and we really have to lean on our data in the future to, to, to help us.
Yeah. And the last thing is water conservation incentives. So the Conservation Program and I'm sure Rob and I will both be involved, there's a, there's a budget item this year to, to come up with a water conservation plan for the city. And hopefully it'll have some additional incentives, you know, programs, policies that will become as recommendations to council.
Any other comments?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's it.
Just have a quick question that, at this stage of the game, just presenting everything that you threw at us tonight, truthfully, we are not without water. We don't want our citizens to wake up tomorrow and listen to this and say, "Oh, my gosh, we're, we're dead without, we have no water." We've got some amazing options as far as getting people on sewer. We have our basins that we're putting in. We've got our injection well. We're looking at our downtown wells and we have our Golden Valley walls. I don't want our citizens to panic tomorrow that we're out of water this very second, that we've got some great options. Is that what I'm hearing? We do have some options in front of us. We have to be careful. We have to be smart, but we're not out of water. Is that correct? Because that's the question we're going to hear tomorrow. Are we out of water?
No, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I needed to hear.
We've got a lot of work to do.
We have a ton of work, absolutely. No question. Absolutely.
So this slide here kind of speaks a little to that effect. The decline in the Wallop Bay Basin is about three feet a year and our pumps sit about 100 feet below water surface. So, and the pumps could likely be deepened some if they need to, but, I mean, it's certainly concerning that it's declining.
Absolutely. I think that the studies are going to tell us a lot, but I think more importantly, proactive steps that you're describing and whatever comes out of the study group, recommendations to the state on actions that may be needed at the state level to help us out. I think all of that combined will be part of the successful plan to conserve and, and preserve and also identify future water resources for our city. So I, I would mention that we've used up our hour just about and, but this subject is so important that I felt like it was a, a good thing.
Yeah. Just to build on your point, I mean, I think the whole reason that we, we created the Kingman Water Sustainability Committee is to be proactive and to act as our think tank because the more proactive you are, the more alternatives and flexibility you have and when you're reactive. I remember when the 2006, 2007, and you had all these huge master plan communities that were on paper and everybody was freaking out about the water and then that went away because of the crash. And then now we have the commercial farming. So, you know, to, to have that group, which is all people that are very knowledgeable in their field in water, to be our think tank, to be proactive, to come up with solutions before we are in such a bind.
And Madam Foggins, so Tim, would you like to postpone the presentation on mission goals?
Yes, if, if you don't mind, Mayor.
I would like to do that because I really think this discussion.
Agreed. Yep.
Taking the whole hour. Really appreciate what you're doing and as the, the think, the think tank of our water sustainability mission is going to be very important. I'll take this opportunity to state that this week I did receive the letter from the state pointing me to the Mahavi County West Basin Water Use Study Committee. state pointing me to the Mojave County West Basin Water Use Study Committee. But, and I'm working with the think tank. And that will be valuable. And also, I am part of the non-AMA groundwater subcommittee at the state level that, again, is looking for rural, especially rural area recommendations for a state level consideration. So there's going to be a lot of dialogue coming in that, but this group is valuable because, as Vice Minister said, it is full of all of our water...
Thank you.
And did you have anything to add?
Yeah, just, I would just point out also that one of the things that we did in late, well, winter, if we want to call it winter, late January, is we put together a conservation pamphlet. And we did, with the help of Colleen and Kealan, put together a great YouTube video on water conservation. We're going to obviously continue to do that. One of the things that we are working on within the city operations is how can we continue to grow? We're not growing at double digit by any means, but, you know, how can we continue to grow as a community and still use the same amount of water or even less? And for a community our size, we use very little water. I think our community does a wonderful job. That being said, there are places for us to conserve as citizens. We are looking at how to improve our water system efficiency. When we pull it out of the ground, do we get it to the house and do we get it back to the sewer plant and without losing that water? One of the things that Rob mentioned is the importance of upgrading our meters. A 20-year-old meter potentially can read as low as 70% of the water that actually runs through it. So staying active on replacing meters is extremely important. And then also, as I said, just the system efficiency. You know, if the industry standard for system efficiency in water is 15%, how do we get ours half of that? You know, and so they're just, these are all things that we're looking at and setting performance measurements against and we'll be tracking them. And I really appreciate Rob and Greg. And the committee has done a fantastic job of vetting these projects, talking about ways of how do we put the water back into the ground and how do we pull less out? So kudos to my team in the county for their efforts. Thank the council for their support. We're not out of water. That's the point. The point is that it is still a scarce commodity that we have the need to be good stewards of. And so sustainability over time is our responsibility. And although we're a smaller player in the aquifer, we're the most responsible and will continue to be. And so with that, that concludes, if there's any other questions, quickly, we'll be happy to answer those. If not, we're done for today, so.
Thank you. Well, okay, so we will postpone the commission goals review. Thank you for being here. I know whoever's going to... But we'll postpone that until our next meeting. And there's nothing further, or I would entertain a motion. Well, I don't even have to do a session. So this meeting is ended. Thank you.
Kingman Common Council to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Leinigfelder?
Here.
Councilmember Melo Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson is here.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Excused.
We have a call.
Thank you. Would you please rise and we're, tonight we have Jessica Cooper of Hope City Church to give our invocation. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If we could all bow our heads, please. Father, we just lifted up this meeting tonight, Father. And Father, we lift up the city council members, the mayor, Father, the city attorney and the city manager, Father. And Lord, we pray, Father, for every decision that's made tonight. We pray, Father, that everything that's on the agenda, Father, that they would, that you would give them vision, give them insight, Father. Father, I pray that every decision that is made would be made, Father, with wisdom and discernment. Father, I pray, Father, that everything that they do would be for the benefit, Lord, for the people, Lord, for the city. Father, I pray that the council members, Lord, and the city heads, Lord, would all work in unity together. Father, I pray, Lord, that you would just protect everything that goes on here tonight, Father, and that, Lord, this city, it belongs to you. And so, Father, we thank you, Lord, that you've put it in capable hands. And in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. They tried to fool us. And they succeeded. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS Okay. It's come to order. Council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered and decisions made relating thereto. Our first order of business this evening is the appointments. And our first one is the appointment to the Clean City Commission. Jennifer Boncorrie, I'm going to say that right, I hope, Boncorrie? Thank you, has applied for appointment to the Clean City Commission. The Clean City Commission currently has one vacant position. This position must be filled by someone who lives within the city limits of Kingman because the CCC currently has two members who live outside the city limits, the maximum number allowed. Staff recommends the appointment of Jennifer to the Clean City Commission to a term expiring December of 2021. Is the applicant here and would you like to speak to the council, please?
Thank you for seeing me. You've all met me before. I've been here before planning and zoning, but I also said that I'd been very interested in doing Clean City and a couple of other items and it came up. So I'm here again. Just let you know how much I love this city and I want to be a part of it. And I've actually come from a few different companies that have had, the environment has been a very big impact on what we did. I, right now, I work for Nucor in Kingman, which is also the largest recycler in the United States. So it's kind of something that I have a passion for as well. And I wanted to be a part of the city and this is something that I have a great interest in. So I've already met with the city before and spoken to them.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your interest. Are there any comments?
Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Okay. So who is our liaison to Clean City?
I am.
Oh, you are? Okay. Well, if you don't have comments, would you like to make a motion?
I'd love to make a motion. In fact, Jennifer is the last thing in the commission and the commission voted.
Turn that on, too. When the commission met her, and of course, I think everybody has met you before, so we're glad you're here tonight. And so I make a motion that we appoint Jennifer Boncorrie to the Clean City Commission.
Thank you. Second. I have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Boncorrie to the Clean City Commission. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. And welcome to the commission and thank you for your service to the city and community. The second order of business on appointments is the appointment to the Parks, Aquatics, Recreation and Golf Commission. Roger Jacks has applied for the Parks, Aquatics, Recreation and Golf Commission currently, which currently has two vacancies. A maximum of two non-city residents are permitted to serve on the commission. Staff recommends appointing Mr. Jacks to a two-year term on the Park Commission. Is Mr. Jacks here? Hello, Roger, please come up and address the council. We appreciate your application.
I'm just anxious to serve my community, so looking forward to the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, welcome to a new form for you.
Absolutely.
Yes, yeah. After retirement from the schools.
Yes, absolutely.
This would be something very productive and we appreciate your application. Who is the applicant? Who is the Park? Is that, that's me? Is that you?
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Jacks for this commission.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Roger Jacks to the Park Commission. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We'll now go to call for the, to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Are these my, all call to the public? Okay, we have a number of call to the public this evening. The first one is Tim Gerlach.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Tim Gerlach. I'm of Golden Valley. As many of you know, I'm on the Airport Advisory Commission and I'm also president of the EA Chapter out of Kingman Airport. I found sitting up there is much easier to sit up there than it is to stand here and speak to all of you folks. I get a little bit nervous over on this side. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Aviation Heritage Center of Kingman, which is a local nonprofit corporation. Our initial executive team set out a couple of months ago to design and construct a modern facility at Kingman Airport, which will be home to a series of museum galleries with unique interactive experiences, educational and technology programs, a special events center and warbird support facility. Our goal is to provide a true world-class destination here in Kingman. This is a major undertaking, one that will require support from both private and public resources. For our team, this project is the ultimate expression of our love for aviation, respect for our history, sacrifices made and our desire to make a lasting contribution to this community. By early December, we will be requesting an audience with the council to present our vision of the entire project, as well as to any of the city commissions that wish to hear our plans. This is only delayed because most of our team is currently working on putting together another free-to-the-community aviation event out of the airport right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for the comments. Second person to speak will be Bill McCabe.
Tonight I would talk to you about discrimination through the ADA codes and regulations, the different sections I pulled out. First of all, codes are minimum and you can always be more stringent than the code. Anyhow, first one is, public entities that are subject to the ADA as well as other federal disability discrimination laws must be aware of the requirements of all applicable laws and must comply with these laws and their implementing regulations. Second one talks about Title III prohibits discrimination on the basis of disabilities in activities of place of public accommodation. Businesses that are generally open to the public and that fall into one of the twelve categories listed in the ADA, such as restaurant, movie theater, school, daycare facilities, recreation facilities, doctor's offices, require newly constructed or other places of public accommodation, as well as commercial facilities. Private-owned, non-residential facilities, warehouses or building, office buildings to comply with the ADA standards. This is under the section 351.49, description, discrimination prohibit. No qualifying individual with disability shall be excused from public entry, facility or inaccessible to or unusable by individual with disabilities. Be excluded from participating in or be denied the benefits of service program or activities of public entity or be subject to discrimination by any public entity. Last meeting we had, you guys have the front doors locked. That's the only entrance that has the ADA ramp. You want everybody to come up the flight stairs. There's a lot of people that can't get up there. I brought it up to the fire chief. He was aware of it, but nothing's ever been done to fix that. Tonight, we were lucky, we caught somebody going out, but the doors are locked and you can't get in. That's discrimination, right there.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. Senator Foggan, I'm sure you'll take those comments under advisement. Third speaker tonight will be Sue and Paul Yamaguchi.
Honorable mayor and council members and authorities. The reason that we came today is to propose a request for the studying and considering placing of stop signs in an area that is close to the Cecil Davis Park. The Cecil Davis Park has a high volume of children that are crossing the street there to get to the park. There's a water, a wonderful water feature there that the kids just love this time of year. There's a baseball field, there's a garden, there's a lot of wonderful, the facility is great for people. So in the interest for public safety and especially for protecting and hopefully preventing any serious accident occurring with our children, there is a roadway there that we've witnessed cars just barreling down at, I mean, on Van Buren, which runs north and south. And there's only one stop sign. I think that perhaps that may contribute to the fact, I mean, on Van Buren going in that direction, that may contribute to the way people drive there because a lot of the other streets that are parallel have a lot of stop signs. So naturally, cars that are interested in getting to work or getting home or doing whatever are just coming down that road at an excessive rate of speed. And we've witnessed very many near misses with kids getting hit because of that fact.
Yeah, and obviously, it's personal. One of them was our granddaughter that almost got run over. So we're requesting you to consider stop signs on Van Buren Street, which runs north and south at Lily Avenue. There are already stop signs at Southern, so.
Thank you very much. Senator Foggan, take that under advisement. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Next order of business. Next order of business is the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Would any of the council like to remove any of the consent agenda items for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove item A, please.
Item A. Any other items? And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items B through, is it M?
N.
N, B through N.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda items B through N.
I second that motion.
This motion is second to approve consent agenda items B through N. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Consent agenda item A, Kingman Industrial Park land sale. Parcels for UEE, two acres at the Kingman Airport and Industrial Park, was auctioned on July 31st at 3:00 PM at the appraised value of $96,000. There is one qualified and winning bidder, Import Corner LLC. Staff recommends acceptance of the bid as presented and authorizing Mayor to sign quit claim deed. Advice made.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there anyone in the audience from Import Corner this evening? I just wanted to take the opportunity to pull the item to express thanks for Import Corner doing business in Kingman, for expanding their operations in Kingman. We appreciate you and we appreciate you buying the land and expanding your manufacturing, as I understand it. Thank you.
That's really good news. Thank you.
I would motion to approve item A.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda item A? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay. Now, cut out several pages. Now we are going to consider old business. Approval of Resolution 5236, intergovernmental agreement with Northern Arizona Fire District Number One for Management Services. Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District has approached the Kingman Fire Department for Management Services, which includes Fire Chief Services. The department has conducted an analysis for the services provided. Staff recommends the approval of Resolution 5236 for intergovernmental agreement with Northern Arizona Fire District Number One for Management Services. Good evening, Chief Rhodes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So we come back tonight after several months of work and put together an IGA that has taken a lot of different looks, a lot of different visions, from the 30,000-foot view to the three-foot view, to be very honest, and an analysis that goes along with that. Because whenever you're looking at something like this, it's new. It's new to the state of Arizona, it's definitely new to our area, and I think it was very important that we look at this from a lot of different angles. And so benefits was one of the main things that we talked about last time. What is the benefit to the city? So, as I reiterated from last time, immediately, we start looking at safety. Safety and customer service, that's what we really focus a lot of our business upon, right? And so what we do is that safety aspect, that goes into operations, that goes into the way we respond to our mutual aid, those type of things. Because as I've said before, that border in between the district and the city is Gordon and some arbitrary streets here and there. Nobody really knows the difference. And for instance, Saturday, whenever NACFED is out on a fire and one of my captains hears the call, they haven't been dispatched yet because that's not part of the run cards. It's not part of the automatic response. He looks out the street and sees the fire and self-disbatches. That's one of my veteran captains jumping into action. And it became what it was, was an automatic response at that point. But we can fix those things, and they should be fixed. There are borders that we need to fix run cards. We have a current IGA for mutual aid and automatic aid that's 20 years old, needs addressed. Technology's changed, response systems have changed, the abilities of the district with some of their economic woes have changed, which has affected their staffing. So that changes altogether and improves things. We've had some incidents at the airport that changed right away. The run cards out there changed. That is in the district. And we've been questioning a lot about that property and why we don't respond if the city of Kingman, now we run it. It's still in the district. But we've been talking a lot about that with interim Chief King and myself. We've talked about those things that need management. And that's what this management services agreement does. It takes our staff and helps that, extends what we do, and I think we've done very well for the last five years, and extends that level of service out to and to the district in all areas. And I think that's effective. Everything from officer development, succession planning, to down to the nitty-gritty of how we do payroll, how we do some administrative tasks, SOPs and those type of things. Again, we're talking about two separate government entities, and that's what this IGA is really, really taking care of. And comments that we had from last time is the termination of the agreement, keeping them separate, keeping us as separate as possible when it comes to liabilities and things like that. So I also have Chairman Bailey here as well for any questions, and that's what I'd like to open it up to, unless I missed anything, City Commissioner Foggan. That's where I'm at. Any questions that I could answer for everyone here?
Any questions of the chief?
I guess I'd only have one question, yes, sir. For the current council or a future council down the road, for whatever reason, if something doesn't work out, the arrangement doesn't work out, it's a bad date, as you said one time.
Yes.
It's not going to be difficult to part ways in the future.
No, and that's something that the district attorney and Carl really focused in on, because that was a comment that we had, that we discussed last time, and we thought was very important because of council board members and even council members here, to see the advantage. Or maybe down the road, it just doesn't work. And that's why in here we also built it as a two-year pilot at an analysis of one year that I think is, I think that is one of the most critical things. And we heard from Chief Gaylord, this program up there, this is the model. I mean, if we're talking about Arizona, and we're starting to see it in other places because of the strife of some of the districts and the dollar numbers that are coming out. So these type of things are becoming more and more common. So that was a key point, and I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Sure, just as we went through the agreement, we wanted to make sure that we established that we are and will remain completely separate entities. It's just what we're doing is lending that professional oversight to that other entity. And if at any point in time that the parties decide to separate, then obviously we can do a 90-day notice and then break the ranks. And obviously, you've got to give enough time that gives everybody to sort it out, as well as them to get their people in place to take over. But overall, it seems like it's a pretty good agreement, and it seems like it's worked really well in Flagstaff.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, chief. I want to thank you also for the care and diligence that's been put into this over months and months of work, because it really will, as it seems to, I think, most of us, it's going to strengthen our service strategy throughout the region.
Well, I appreciate that. And some of the comments up here have really helped us really look a lot differently, take different perspectives on certain things, and even some discussions in-house is that we're a contract, we're a contract service, and that's really what it is. It seems funny, but you look at it differently. Yes, sir.
Just one last comment. One of the big strengths, I think, of this that we haven't mentioned tonight is the level of service at our airport and our industrial park, which is the largest concentration of industrial activity and jobs. The level of service there is going to go up, or is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I think without a doubt, and it's something that we actually discussed on Monday when I talked to Chairman Bailey, is that changes pretty rapidly as soon as we get in dispatch, look at run cards, and do that analysis of what needs to respond and when and why. And it's things that we analyze in the city and are standard to cover, and now that analysis gets spread out a little bit more of why we respond, when we respond, and how we respond.
Music to my ears.
That will also help service delivery to our high school.
Of course.
And those students that are there. That's wonderful. Did Chairman Bailey want to make any comments?
Sir, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you for being here. Any other comments? Then I would entertain a motion regarding the IGA with NACFED.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 5236 for a management agreement with NACFED.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 5236, the IGA with Northern Arizona Fire District for Management Services. Is there any further discussion? Then all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Counsel.
Yes, chief.
Next item of old business is the Sunbelt Park Master Plan. This is the revised Sunbelt Park drawing C5 based on the latest input. This offers multiple field layout options. With the elimination of many trees and the removal of one volleyball and one basketball court, this proposal includes much more turf area. The parking area is undersized for the amount of traffic per the number of available fields. Staff recommends moving forward with concept C5. Good evening, Mr. Miersman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We took the information that we got from the input from the people at the prior meeting and the questions that you had, and we got with J2 Engineering, and I think we've come up with some really good changes. Here's the property again, where the park will be located. C5, the revised drawings, it shows multiple fields, there's multiple options. We eliminated one volleyball court, one basketball court, and removed a lot of the trees, as well as we rerouted the path, so it just goes around the outside of the park, which I think makes it a lot better anyways. It's a lot longer trail, it'll be a lot longer trail that'll go around the outside of the park. And we talked about the parking lot is undersized for the amount of traffic that will be at that park. We don't see that as a real major problem, we don't think, because we've got a really good intergovernmental agreement with the schools. We hopefully can utilize their parking, and we're very confident we can work with them on that. So here's the C5 layout showing with no field layouts at all, but there's all different options. This just shows a percentage of turf dedicated to soccer field and multi-use fields. This drawing here shows with C5, the layout shows with U14, U16, U18, 12, 10, and 8 fields, all the different locations. This even shows more options with smaller fields. So it just gives us a lot of different options, and this comes, like I said, from communicating with the Kingman Youth Soccer Group, many of them, we've had emails back and forth, talked, and that's all I have there. And we had emails of support from the Vice President of Kingman Youth Soccer, and we look forward to getting started on this really, so hopefully we'll.
Thank you.
You'll support this, and we can get rolling on it, so.
Are there any questions for Mr. Miersman?
I have one.
Please go.
Explain to me, was there anything that was taken away from the fire department and their property?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, counselor.
You did mention, and of course you addressed it already, which is good, as far as parking, because all of us have gone to Centennial Park to support kids and grandkids playing soccer, and even then, there's lots of parking, but there isn't often sometimes. So have you put fingers out or talked to the school district as far as?
We have not talked to them yet about, like I said, we've had a very good working relationship with them in the past, and they utilize our facilities a lot, and we utilize theirs, so we don't see this as being a problem. We do have an agreement with them that at Metcalf Park, where we utilize that park, when we have rentals in the park and Metcalf Park is used, they allow us to use that, and we have a key to that gate, which we issue to the people that are renting the facility, and they give us the key back and get their deposit back.
Okay.
So we see things like that. We're pretty confident we can work that out.
Good. Okay. Thanks.
Just one question, if I may, Madam Mayor. Mike, correct me if I'm wrong on the amount, but the 300-something thousand the city has in parks, funds that have to be spent in parks, right? That funding is going to be used for grading and site prep and whatever else to get the ball rolling?
That's what our plan is. And we want to get the drawings done for the irrigation system, things like that that are going to have to be done before we can grow any grass, so that's what our goal is, to try to get things started, to get some.
Thank you.
Sports, if we can play on, so.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We have two people that have signed up to speak on this, and the first one is Rick Kelsey from the Kingman Youth Soccer League.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Rick Kelsey. I'm the chief executive officer for the Arizona Soccer Association. We oversee and register 45,000 soccer players in Arizona alone. Just to give you an idea of the efforts we're putting in outlying areas, tomorrow night, I'm at the city council meeting in San Luis. So the outlying areas and really working outside of the metro Phoenix area and growing the game is very important to us. We're very fortunate to have a partner and a strong member in Kingman Youth Soccer League who's been a part of Arizona Soccer Association since the 1980s. We've seen their growth in their soccer program over the last number of years. We've seen, they're almost at 900 kids playing. A number of years back, they were in the 700s. So we've seen humongous amounts of growth, and we want to continue to supporting that. The great thing about their growth is now not only do they have the recreational side, which is the kids that want to play those eight to 10 weeks at a time, and then go back and play baseball or basketball, and then come back to soccer, but they also are starting to develop really strong competitive programs. Part of the competitive programs and what the challenge of those is they need to be able to have good, strong quality fields in their communities. And the reason why having them in their communities means so much is because that way we can bring kids from other communities into theirs. Give the kids an opportunity to play at home, in front of their friends, in front of their family. One of the things we've been doing with Arizona Soccer Association, we've been partnering with our neighboring states as well. So we actually started a league this last year with New Mexico, the Arizona-New Mexico Development League. So that's our 11 and 12-year-olds. I've had conversations with Nevada Youth Soccer to create the same thing. Kingman's in a perfect location to bring teams out of Nevada into Arizona and not have to go to Phoenix, bring teams out of southern Utah even to come down into Kingman. So getting these kind of this quality field for this organization not only helps continue to build the recreational program, but gives us opportunities to really grow competitive programs within the city. I think this is a great opportunity as well, so tomorrow I can go to San Luis and say, "Hey, guess what Kingman's doing." So anything we can continue doing to help drive that partnership between the nonprofits and the community, along with the city, is something we want to continue to drive.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kelsey. Thank you for coming to Kingman. The next speaker is John Wilcox from the Kingman Youth Soccer League.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me. I'm the Vice President of Kingman Youth Soccer League. I've been on the board for about three years. Projects like this and the lights have been things that we've really worked with the city council a lot on, and we're happy that we're making progress in all this stuff. We've been working with Mr. Miersman and making sure that all of our needs were met. We've had several different people on our board make suggestions and things that needed to be adjusted from the first round of concepts and drawings that we've seen. They've gone out of their way to contact us and work with us and make all those adjustments and things that we've asked for, like the more turf areas and just making it easier access. So we, as the board, we're 100% behind this. You know, we voted, we're unanimously ready to, you know, support moving forward with the project, and we're just happy that you guys are working with us and we were able to get that pushed through. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Any questions or comments?
Mike, how many basketball courts are at Centennial?
There are four at Centennial.
Four? I'm disappointed that there's only going to be one here, and also, we intended to share that with the fire department, right?
Yeah, and we could still look at, if we can get with the fire department and possibly have some more things on their property as well. I mean, they may be open to that. They have more acreage at this site than they have at any of their other fire stations, so, you know, and we may be able to find a place to squeeze more in there too as well, so.
Oh, no, it looks pretty green. But, okay, that's it.
Yeah, I'd like to make, I think that this new park is going to be a great addition to Kingman for our sports tourism. And I just would like to thank all of the staff, you and your staff, the consultants, all that have been involved, including Kingman Youth Soccer League, thank you, and all of the businesses, future and present, and the contractors that will be helping to build up this new park for our community. It's going to be a team effort, public-private partnership, but really that sports tourism... team effort, public-private partnership, but really that sports tourism, as the director said, to bring teams here, host new tournaments, that's new revenue for the city. It's a positive thing, so appreciate it.
Just real quick. My biggest concern has always been, and I love the public-private partnership, I believe in that wholeheartedly. Things can't be done by the soccer group without going through the proper channels, because we can't have a lawsuit. That's my biggest concern, and that's the insurance agent in me that's screaming right now, and she's sitting here with red lights. So please, that's my biggest concern, and we just, we got to make sure that, yes, we have the public-private partnerships, and those are amazing, but they've got to go through the right channels.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Miersman? And I would entertain a motion on the Sunbelt Park Master Plan.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to move forward with concept C five.
I'll second that.
This motion is second to move forward with concept C five. Any further discussion? Then all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Consideration of Ordinance Number eighteen ninety for the rezoning of certain property on North Kenneth Road and North Adams Street. From C three commercial service business to R two residential multiple-family low density. A request from Mike Fettro, applicant and Pioneer Title Track ninety-thirty A Brilliant Diamond LLC owner, for the rezoning of certain property located on the east side of North Kenneth Road and the west side of North Adams Street, from C three commercial service business to R two residential multiple-family low density. The rezoning is requested to allow for the development of two single-family residences on two five-thousand-square-foot lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on July ninth, twenty nineteen. The commission voted six-oh to recommend approval of the rezoning request. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance Number eighteen ninety. Good evening, Mr. Eglis.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, this is a rezoning case to rezone from C three to R two for a property located, actually, two five-thousand-square-foot parcels located on North Kenneth Road and North Adams Street north of Airway Avenue. This is the site as viewed from Adams Street looking west, and this is our current zoning map showing the two parcels in question there. They are currently boarded by the R two zoning to the north, and C three is surrounding them to the south. This is the current aerial map of the site. The Hs that you see on the map there represent houses that have been constructed since this aerial was taken. The UC is for houses under construction currently, so you can see there are houses in this area, and then you have existing commercial development to the south on Airway Avenue. So it involves two five-thousand-square-foot parcels that are currently vacant and zone C three. They are in the boundary between areas designated for community commercial and intermediate density residential in their general plan land use designation. The area was annexed into the city nineteen seventy-seven, and C three zoning was established in lots that were within three hundred feet of Airway Avenue, and then you lost north of that to Stevens Avenue, rezoned R two. It's basically a flat site, nothing unusual about it. The area is served by existing water sewer lines, and is accessed by North Adams Street and North Kenneth Road, which are fifty-foot-wide right-of-way with a complete street improvements. We posted the site, advertised in the newspaper. We did receive one comment in favor of the rezoning from neighboring property owner, and there were no other comments or objections from any departments or agencies. So again, the request would be to rezone these two parcels from C three to R two. Single-family homes are permitted uses in the R two zoning district, but not in the C three district. The zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission took a look at the, they have to make certain findings whenever they consider rezoning. First finding has to do with a demonstrated need for uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. This is an area that's rapidly growing with new single-family homes constructed on the existing five-thousand-square-foot-sized lots. There hasn't been a lot of new commercial development in the area in recent years, but there has, as I said, a lot of single-family development, so that need can be demonstrated. And then, second, is the suitability of the proposed zoning district and the compatibility with the surrounding area and the community. This subdivision was planted well before the city was even created in nineteen twenty-nine, and it was, area was annexed in nineteen seventy-seven. So the subdivision lots are primarily five-thousand-square-foot in size, which is below our typical minimum of six-thousand square feet. We do allow, however, single-family homes to be built-in lots that are less than six-thousand square feet in these older subdivisions. And so as a result, this is what you've seen as far as development in the area. Small lot sizes do make it rather difficult to decide a commercial use on those lots unless you combine with other lots in the area. Also, there is a requirement for a ten-foot setback whenever a commercial lot is developed next to a residential lot, which, again, kind of further limits the feasibility of commercial development. And single-family homes are easily centered on the five-thousand-square-foot lots. So the site does appear to be compatible with that type of development. As I mentioned, it's on the boundary between areas designated in the general plan for intermediate density residential land use and the community commercial in the R two district would be compatible with the intermediate density residential designation. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning, and that is reflected in the ordinances before you for your consideration. We're recommending approval of the Ordinance eighteen ninety. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Well, at this point, then, if there are no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion on Ordinance Number eighteen ninety.
I motion that we adopt Ordinance Number eighteen ninety, as stated.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance eighteen ninety, rezoning this property to residential, R two residential multiple-family low density. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Next order of business, consideration of Ordinance Number eighteen ninety-one for the rezoning of certain property located at thirty-nine fifty-eight North Rainbow Drive from R two residential multiple-family low density to RR Rural Residential. A request from Gary and Charlotte Sherwood, applicant and property owner, for the rezoning of certain property located at thirty-nine fifty-eight North Rainbow Drive from R two residential multiple-family low density to RR Rural Residential. The rezoning is requested to allow a manufactured home and garage to be placed on the subject site, which is one acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on July ninth, twenty nineteen. The commission voted six-oh to recommend approval of the rezoning request. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance eighteen ninety-one. Mr. Eglis.
Good evening, again. As Mayor mentioned, this is a rezoning request to rezone from R two residential medium, I'm sorry, residential multiple-family low density to RR Rural Residential to allow a manufactured home and garage to be placed on a property located at thirty-nine fifty-eight North Rainbow Drive. This is a view of the site from Rainbow Drive, and this shows the surrounding zoning. You have rural residential zoning to the west and south of the property, RMH twenty zoning, which is half-acre lots with typically with manufactured homes to the north and to the east, and then the area of R two to the north where there are some duplexes along Gordon Drive, just across the street from the Los Neves School. This is the site. It's pretty much surrounded by developed single-family residential development and manufactured homes. The property itself is one acre in size. The area was annexed in the city in two thousand. The R two zoning was established on both this property, the lot immediately to the north, and the lot north of that where the, currently where the duplexes are located, because that was the lot, the zoning that most closely matched the county zoning, and that's a requirement whenever we annex a property into the city. The lot directly to the north was rezoned to RMH twenty and split in two thousand and three to allow those two manufactured homes to be put on the property. The area is generally flat, not looked at the flood zone. There is existing water sewer lines in Rainbow Drive. Rainbow Drive is a maintained graded street with a forty-foot-wide right-of-way and no other street improvements. We posted the site. Surrounding property owners were notified of the public hearing. We didn't receive any comments from the public, and there were no objections or comments from any departments or agencies. So again, the rezoning request would facilitate the construction of a manufactured home and garage. Those uses are permitted in RR, but they're not permitted in the R two district. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission made findings on this particular rezoning request, and one had to do with the demonstrated need for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. This is a rural or semi-rural area, primarily developed with manufactured homes and half-acre and one acre lots. Area has city water sewer, so this combination makes it rather attractive for this type of development. Most lots in the area are already built with manufactured homes, so the need for additional home development can be demonstrated. This subdivision was planted in the early nineteen sixties with one-acre lots on the unimproved forty-foot-wide streets. As I mentioned before, was annexed in the city. The county rezoned several lots to multiple-family, but only the lot that's directly on Gordon Drive was ever developed for that purpose. So what you have now is really an island of R two surrounded by areas that would be, which would allow up to nineteen units per acre, surrounded by an area that's really designated more for low-density development. And with the substandard right-of-way width for North Rainbow Drive and the lack of street improvements, it's really more appropriate for low-density development. So we believe it is more suitable for our zoning rather than R two. And it is in accordance with the general plan. So the Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval. The ordinance is before you for your consideration, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Given no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number one-eight-nine-one.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance eighteen ninety-one and for the rezoning of thirty-nine fifty-eight North Rainbow Drive to Rural Residential. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. New business C, Resolution Number five-two-three-four, Approval of Water Service to Parcel Three Thirty Twenty oh eleven for one single-family home, ENG nineteen dash zero-zero-four-seven. The city has received a request from Nick Main for water service to the unsubdivided parcel three thirty twenty oh eleven for the construction of a new single-family home at four hundred Camelback Boulevard. Parcel three thirty twenty eleven oh eleven is a one-hundred-and-ninety-six-point-seven acre property located west of Stockton Hill Road, south of Camelback Boulevard, and adjacent to the Kingman-Camelback subdivision. Section three-point-three of the city utility regulations requires that water service requests to unsubdivided properties receive city council approval after review by the municipal utility commission. The commission reviewed this request at their July twenty-fifth meeting and voted four-zero to recommend approval with the conditions noted in Resolution Number fifty-two thirty-four. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number fifty-two thirty-four. Good evening again, Mr. Henry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor's indicated, this is a request for water service to an unsubdivided property. Basically, what we mean when we say unsubdivided property is that it does not belong to an existing subdivision. That's what's known as a meets-and-bounce parcel that was created either with a parcel plot or record or survey at some point. The property is located, as you can see on the map, we have Stockton Hill that diagonals almost through the center of the map, and then we have Camelback Boulevard that comes across to the north part of the property. The property's located in red. It's about a hundred and ninety-seven acres in size. It's a rather large property. It has numerous terrain features, peaks, valleys, mountains. Access to the property is from Camelback Boulevard. The site address would be four hundred Camelback Boulevard. The applicant is Nick Main. He intends to build a single-family house located at the approximate location shown here, and on the next slide here as well. This slide shows general terrain features, and it also shows our Camelback water tank there on the upper part of the picture. That water tank feeds the Camelback subdivision to the east by gravity flow. One of the challenges to this property is that that tank is located, or the property is located at or above the tank elevation, so it won't be gravity service to the approximate home, the new home location, and in order to provide fire flows, there'll have to be some sort of booster pumps that will up the pressure of the water to provide the required five-hundred gallons a minute that the fire code requires. That's one challenge of the property. There's a design report that's been submitted, and this, I have some photos here that just kind of show the terrain. This first one is looking at the property looking west from Shane Drive and Jagerson Avenue. We have this one here that's taken from Camelback Boulevard at Christie Drive, looking west, and the water tank, the city water tank. It's kind of hard to see up there on the screen, but hopefully it's all shows up a little better on there. The water tank's located at the end of this road off to the right side of the photo there. And then this photo, the last photo, was taken sitting near the water tank and looking south towards where the approximate location of the home to be built is located. In addition to the issue with water pressure, there's a street improvement ordinance that would kick in on this property, Ordinance eighteen thirteen. Essentially, the road here, which is identified as an unmaintained road as an attachment to that, Ordinance Number thirteen, would require improvements to be in place prior to a building permit being issued, and those improvements would include curb gutters, sidewalk, asphalt paving, to what we call the half-plus-eight standard. So they would build to the center line, and then half the pavement on the other side of the roadway as well. There was discussion at the utility commission on this, and the applicant voiced some objection on that, and the utility commission said, well, that's something I'll have to bring up to the council, so, or warning you that there might, that will come up here tonight. In addition to the street improvement requirements, there's other concerns, development ordinance requirements for this property, including the hillside ordinance. Because of the terrain, the hillside ordinance limits the amount of grading that can take place on properties that are steeper than fifteen percent. It may not be an issue on this considering the location of the house that Mr. Main wants to build, but it's something that we would look into and staff would look into at the time the building plans are submitted. In addition, there's drainage that courses its way through the property, and we've had some concerns from residents downstream in this area, so we just want to be careful and cautious that the existing drainage does not get diverted or changed in any form or fashion. And then there's the underground ordinance as well, which requires the undergrounding of secondary power utilities to the home site. Mr. Main is aware of those. He is here tonight. I believe he's likely signed up to speak. I have attached the original council communication and minutes from the May sixteen to, I'm sorry, the May two thousand sixteen council meeting when Ordinance eighteen thirteen was adopted, because not all of you were here when that was done, so hopefully to give you the background on that. I know we talked at our council-commission liaison to attach minutes, and I failed to do that, but I did bring them, and I do have the minutes from the utility commission here, and I'll pull them up on the screen so you can see them. They are, of course, in draft form since this was utility commission here, and I'll pull them up on the screen so you can see them. They are, of course, in draft form since this was just presented to them at their July 25 meeting. And essentially, that's not the minutes. That was the muck write-up. Let me find the minutes here. There they are. But anyway, the utility commission did approve this recommend, approval of water service to the council with the conditions, which included the requirement for the street improvements, the hillside ordinance, the drainage, and the underground, undergrounding of secondary electric. And it was approved again by a four-to-o vote with those conditions, and with that, I will attempt to answer questions.
I have a question. Okay, so tonight we are approving water service.
Correct.
We are, we are not being asked to waive any of these other requirements if they move, or if they build a house in this area, or are you saying that if we, we just approve the water service, they, they build there and, and you'll look at these one at, one at a time? Can you clarify what we're approving tonight and how these other items like the one in Exhibit A are affected?
So the resolution that I prepared that is attached and is recommended for approval by both the utility commission and staff includes the conditions, and mainly, I think the applicant would need to know what's going to be required on him in order to build a house here, instead of learning tonight that maybe he just has to improve the water system and then finding out later on. We, we wanted to bring everything forthcoming to, to make it known, and in, so in the resolution, the conditions for street improvements, for the hillside ordinance, for the drainage, complying with drainage and the undergrounding of utilities are included in the resolution.
So actually, the council is just being asked to, we're not being asked to waive any existing requirements that already exist. We're just being asked to approve the water service and, and basically endorse existing ordinances.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
There is a requirement in each utility regulations to, for the council to approve water service to these parcels. And it, some of them are, are routine. This one has, has more conditions
Right.
than usual, but it's likely that, that, that was created long before my time at the city, back in the late eighties, that requirement for unsubdivided parcels to come in. And I think it was a, a way of maybe tracking development, how water gets used in our system, so these will admit, they are, they are heavy conditions, and there, there are some costs associated with each, with each of them, particularly the street improvement one. But again, they are adopted ordinances and they are in our codes now, so yeah, we're just kind of asking council to affirm those and then make that, make it known that these are the development requirements for this property.
So just, again, to clarify, there's four conditions in the, in the, in the ordinance. Approval is for water service for one single-family home. That home will be served by water booster pumps that they supply and design, right? That home will be complying with the hillside ordinance, and that home will improve the adjacent streets in accordance with 1813, ordinance 1813.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Henry?
Greg, where is the closest water main that that's going to, that the proposed, you know, homeowner's going to tap into?
It's actually located in Camelback Boulevard.
Okay.
There's a sixteen-inch transmission main that comes and, and fills the Camelback water tank there.
Yes.
It's a million-gallon water tank. And so their proposal would be to connect to that line and have a booster pump draw from that line and boost pressure for both the fire hydrant and the water service to the house, because our regulations require, you know, minimum water pressure for the house of forty PSI static, and they require five hundred gallons per minute from a hydrant, and that hydrant has to be located within five hundred feet of the house. Minimum pressure for that, when it's, that five hundred gallons is being drawn from the hydrant is twenty PSI.
And who's going to bear the cost of those, of that stuff going in, then the homeowner?
Yeah.
The developer?
Yeah.
Okay.
The city, the city regulations are written such that developer pays for all costs to serve his development.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. We have two people signed up to speak on this, and the first one is Nicholas Main.
Evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. Three of the conditions in, in that proposal are correct. I already know about underground power. That's, that's how I build, so I'm fine with that. The hillside ordinance, with the amount of the land that's there and where we're going to be building, that's not a problem. I'm already aware of that. The water service, I am aware of that, and it wasn't the initial intent. It was the initial intent to drill a well and have storage capacity for fire, but in order to get the house permits and go further, then that was set in motion. I never intended to come off of Camelback. I intended to come off of Jagerson where there's an existing road, and that was always the intent. Our property starts three hundred feet off of Jagerson corner right there. It was never my intent to come off of Camelback, which is undeveloped. So the, the one condition that reading the ordinance that Greg brings up, it states that under a subdivision, which is four parcels or more, you're required to go back all the way to the existing asphalt, which would be on Christie Drive. Currently, the city only maintains five hundred feet off of Christie Drive coming up Camelback. So the rest of it is just all rock, and it's just a four-wheeler trail. So they're stating that under these conditions, that I would be required to improve fifteen hundred feet of road, which I never intended for access, and just for the four-wheelers and the razors to go up into the mountains, and I'm not, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be able to do that affordability. So I was going to be asking for a deferment on the, the road improvements of Camelback based on the fact that I'm not subdividing the parcel. I'm only building one residence, and ba- basically being considered the developer, it states that you would go back to the nearest maintained city street, which would be Camelback, or which would be Jagerson, where Jagerson and Shane come to a corner. So yes, I would like water service, but I'm not willing to sign on for that if it means improving fifteen hundred feet of road where my property only borders five hundred feet of it.
Any questions? During the, the muck meeting, you actually mentioned that you have future plans, could be ten, could be twenty years down the road, to develop this, correct?
The size of the parcel, the, the, the way that it could be split down to one acre parcels, it's feasible that somebody could develop it, but I cannot afford to do that. Being like fifty years old, it's never going to happen. It was just an investment. It's our, it's our intent just to build one single-family residence at that site. It is more valuable because it's a bigger parcel, but it's not my intent to develop it.
Thank you, Mr. Main.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Main.
Oh, good, it's great.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Nick, so how are you planning to, to access the house then? You know, we see the house site. Are you planning on accessing it, you know, all the time, your driveway basically from Jagerson?
Jagerson, where Jagerson comes to where that red line has a point right there.
Correct.
There was an existing road cut in by a previous owner, and it, it's based on the, the right-of-way eighty-four feet that meets Jagerson, and it curves up and around to where it opens up, and you can see kind of a grazed pad there that was cut by somebody years ago. And that's, that would just be driveway, because there's not enough land there to build unless you're cutting into the mountain.
Okay.
So I was just planning on keeping that existing road that's cut there, and you can see where the dog is. That's going to be our house. I wasn't planning on coming in from Camelback. Because there's, there's a huge wash that runs all through the side of Camelback. And right where the water tank is, that's where the existing right-of-way ends. And any future development between this side and the other side that has seventy acres of private Leone land would later, they would be asking for forty-two feet on each side for a new right-of-way for the road to continue up to where it meets Leone property. So it's not feasible that anybody would build on that side of the wash, so it's not practical to come in and cross the wash and disturb the wash. That's where it drains all the way down through along Camelback, and the city owns that parcel where it's, it widens out, and then it comes down through the development. You can see the wash that's cut through the development.
Okay.
So it's not feasible that, that I should come across Camelback, and I didn't want to extend the waters through Camelback either.
So you have no plans of using Camelback Road to access your property or access the house at all?
I have not before.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, can I address the council on the access?
Yes, please.
So I've talked to Keith Eaton from the Fire Department, and he has indicated, and we've, we've assigned an address of 400 Camelback Boulevard in the nine-one-one system. And Keith told me that they would access this property from Camelback Boulevard. That's the address we've assigned. I, I would also point out that in the water design report that Mr. Main submitted with his application in fact shows access from Camelback Boulevard, from the, from Camelback Boulevard to the new house, and it's sideways there. I will see, let me see if I can rotate the view, but you can see the, the, the water tank here. You can see this is Camelback Boulevard, and then there's an access driveway there. And the Fire Department would need that access driveway because they, they need to get their hose from the hydrant to the house when they need to do it, so there wouldn't have to be access from Camelback Boulevard. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that, and
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Main.
Can I say one more thing? Based on that, if that's the criteria for me having to improve Camelback, then I would change the design and go back through muck and run, come up with another design to come up by the house with the well and storage tanks and have a different report that would bring it closer to the house by a gravity system. I wouldn't come off of Camelback and have all that expense just for one single-family residence.
Well, is that, that's a viable process option. So is that something that you choose to do?
Do I have to, do I have to have the street deferments at this time, at this meeting, or do I apply for it and it gets decided at a later date?
That, that is something I'll defer to staff.
I think we'll want to have everything decided.
Yeah.
At the same time.
Yes.
I think, I think it is truly in everyone's benefit and your benefit that all the requirements are known at the same time.
At this time, I will go back to my engineer. I'll come up with an alternative design that, that meets for a more, more cost-effective for one single-family residence.
Okay.
And maybe Camelback later on, somebody, if they ever want to develop it, then they'll address Camelback at that time. It's very rural right now. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for that, that offer. Thank you. At this point, does Renee Redd want to speak? No, because we have, we are now removing this item with consideration in the future. Okay, so no action, further action is required on that item. We will move on to department reports, public relations update on social media and best practices.
Thank you, Mayor. As we come up on a year of having our first public affairs person, we thought it would probably be really appropriate to, to show you what, what we've been able to do, what we're, what we're doing, the successes that we've had. It's my pleasure to introduce Colleen Haynes, who's been doing a fantastic job. I also preface this by we're, we're doing our best to move towards what we will call best practices. And, and so one of the things that is coming up or has been coming up is the idea of different departments having social media accounts. Counselor Staley had brought, brought up a question about, I know that we had been approached by the Airport Advisory Commission to have a Facebook page. And what I asked from Counselor Staley is if she would give us an opportunity to show our best practices, what we're trying to do with social media, that I think that would explain better than just, you know, kind of, yeah, no. So this is our, our effort to kind of show you what those best practices are and, and why we're, we're, we're trying to avoid adding additional social media accounts to what we're doing. But of course, we will entertain questions throughout the presentation and, and at the end as well. And so I'll just turn the time over to Colleen to walk you through what she's been doing.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me back. The last time I talked to you guys was as the inter gov back in December, so thanks for having me back as your public affairs person. So we'll get right to it. So some takeaways you're going to get from my presentation is what we've done over the year with internal and external messaging and what it's like to have a PIO in the city, which is new, and we'll show, go through some stats. We'll talk about some fun lingo that you can maybe take home to your grandkids, Councilor Watkins. We'll talk about best practices, and we'll talk about current and future policies. So upon me getting hired, the first week I was here, as I met with every department head and kind of walked them through what a PIO does, Public Information Officer, Public Affairs Coordinator, whatever you want to call it, is why I'm here, how I'm, how I'm going to communicate their message, and how I'm going to make their jobs that much easier and get your messaging out and the good services that we provide to the city out to the public, so they understand what we do. So along with that is I work with every department regarding not only social media, but news releases, videos, graphic design, photos, et cetera, and just kind of being their overall centralized messaging center. Currently, the Police Department and the Fire Department do have their own PIOs, but I do still work with them as well. So along with that is some training. I obviously don't control that staff time, but when it's necessary, I've showed them just some different tools and tricks to use to take their game from good to great. So as your PIO, the city manager can attest that I am the professional wet blanket. That is not my saying. That is a term from like the grandfather of crisis management. What that means is I'm here to give options. I'm here to tell you what those options can or can't do for you. It is not my job to be overly optimistic. It is my job to be blunt. It is my job to be honest. It is my job to say, here are the options. Here are the roads you can go down. Here might be those outcomes of whatever road you choose. So when we talk about social media or technology in general and how it affects my job, it doesn't. All it does is accelerate what we do. All it does is people want information quicker. They can get it quicker. They want it from you quicker. So that's all it does. It's, it's still messaging. It's just real quick. So we'll just kind of focus on the city's Facebook page because that is the one I manage. So within a year, from my hire date, eight-twenty-seven, to last week night, we've increased just our Facebook audience by over seventy percent. Usually municipalities look for an increase of ten to fifteen percent in a year. This is also done with no budget. We have not paid to boost any posts or to target any marketing areas in this region. I believe parks may have a few times, but that was Parks' decision. Like I said, I don't control what that staff does. So this is just kind of an overview of just posts that we did in July and some, some reach that we had. So I'll point out the big ones. You'll see like this is the audience reach we had with our big posts, and we'll get into that. So this one about just the fire weather watch, thirty thousand people were reached, thirty thousand, just with the City of Cayman Facebook page. It was shared almost five hundred times. The other one reached twenty thousand people, just about the red flag warning. Just basic information that I get from the National Weather Service. We rebrand with our logo, which is fine. Facts are not copyrighted. And we put that out, and people share it because weather is important here, and fire warnings are important, and people pay attention to that. So just some other posts that got really huge reach, ten thousand people for the July discount trash pickup. Sorry to Tina for the overloaded phone calls with those being booked. And then also the fire ban that the city enacted, along with the county, we reached twelve thousand people. Those reaches are, are mostly at a very short timeframe. What I explained to city manager Fog and what kind of show him just posts throughout the day of, hey, this is what we posted an hour ago. We've reached three thousand people in an hour. So this isn't obviously all over a month time span. Some of it's over twenty-four, forty-eight hours. So our videos that, that we've done, so people in Kingman, or around the world, mostly Kingman, have viewed our videos for over fifty-nine, fifty-nine thousand minutes. That's forty days. That's forty days people have taken to watch snippets of our video. There's almost fifty produced videos on the City of Cayman Facebook page right now. So what social media platforms do we utilize? Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube. I'm not going to read all these to you. I hope you know what they are, and I hope you're all friends of them, being as city council members and the mayor. So we'll just, I mean, usually, I'll just kind of get into our demographics. Facebook, that's about, you know, it's women, ages thirty-five to forty-four. We dip into a little bit younger, but usually that's our, that's our demographic. That's our audience. Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, we Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, we just started the City of Kingman Instagram, which has a little over 100 followers so far. YouTube is mostly just for kind of streaming the council meetings and of course, all the videos are there as well. So we'll get into best practices now. So when we talk about social media best practices is just that centralized messaging system yet again. We don't need to confuse the public anymore. Our buildings are already scattered throughout the city. We don't need people thinking, well, is, wait, so is that, is public work separate than the city, or who do I go to turn on my water, is it the county, is it the city? No. We are a centralized messaging service that we provide all these services to the people of Kingman. We don't need to confuse them anymore with who says what, when and how. So why I like to get into consistency and credibility, just like with our letterhead. Not every department has a separate letterhead. PD and Fire, yes, they're different, we can talk about that later, but everybody uses the City of Kingman letterhead because people want to know it's coming from the same source. They're getting this information that's credible from the same source. That's part of your centralized messaging system through your PIO. So our policies currently, they were originally created in 2012. A lot has obviously happened with social media and the internet since 2012. They were updated in 2015. New updates were submitted upon us acquiring the equipment, my position, they were turned into, worked with IT and HR on these policies. From what I'm aware, they are sitting with a consultant firm right now, being reviewed and put together in the employee handbook. As working with the city attorney and IT and HR and the city manager, social media policy will forever change because of legislation, because of case law, because of rebranding. In your packet, you've got this little City of Surprise communications plan, in that they already rebranded their community. So and in that policy is the colors they use, the font they use, who else can use it, their logos, is it copyrighted, is it not? Can other people use it? Can they download it from the internet? All that's in that policy, as well as social media. So the way our social media is kind of, the way it should work, the way the city's social media website works is we want it for a limited use, it's a limited forum, it's not an open forum. I don't sit at the computer all day and ask and answer every question or read every comment. That's inappropriate for us to do that. That's not how our Facebook pages are set up. That's not how the city Facebook page is set up. I cannot answer for the other departments. So we create a limited forum. Along with that, other departments that have set up their pages already or were grandfathered in follow different roles, and that's up to those managers and the city manager to work with them. But they are in charge of updating their Facebook pages, just like they're in charge of updating their own pages on the website. So our current policy states that departments are not to have their own separate accounts. It is commonplace for PDs and Fire Departments to have their own in cities this size, but a lot of these other departments were grandfathered in. It was not my job to get hired and come in with this huge gaping sword and cut everything out. It was, okay, let's work and see what we can do to take some from good to great, and we're working on that still. We're talking about, we're having some conversations, so we'll kind of see what that is. Also, the policy states that commissions are not to have their own separate accounts because I can't find anywhere in any policy across the state or anyone where they would allow a non-employee access to messaging or the messaging that comes from the city. So that is a conversation that I believe city manager has had with the Director of Public Works regarding the Clean City Commission and their Facebook page. Like I said, it was grandfathered in. It's not my job to come in and cut everybody down and say, stop doing it. It is the idea of, hey, please create stuff and give us that knowledge and we'll put it out, so we all know it looks the same, it's credible, it's consistent. And we know that we're sharing appropriate things, for instance. We don't want to share things about recycling from California. Would that go over well in the city? Probably not. But there is a way to rebrand recycling conversations that fit for our city and what's happening here. With that, that's about it. I got nothing.
Questions?
I know, sorry, I talk fast, I got to go, 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 go.
So you mentioned the surprise policy.
Yes.
Does the City of Kingman, are we migrating to a policy such as that? Because I agree with you, you don't want to confuse the brand. There needs to be one office, one central location that's in charge and responsible for the whole organization's brand. And when you start to have multiple pages and people, I mean, don't know what's going on on this page, and it's a lot of pages to follow.
So currently, we have nine different pages.
Right.
We've deactivated, from what I know, I think, just one so far. Nine is way too many for us to have, it just is.
So I know that the city is going through a branding exercise.
Yep.
Is the social media aspect of that branding exercise going to be included in the recommendations?
That's exactly why we mentioned that, is because that message and that look that is created is going to be pushed out and that's going to be our brand moving forward.
Organization-wide.
Right. And like I said, as Colleen pointed out, obviously, you know, she's not been here a super long time, nor have I, and it wasn't my intention, nor was it Colleen's intention to come in and just say, oh, these are all just terrible. But it's been to slowly try to improve that and to get these best practices in place. The thing that, of course, is concerning to us is that there is confusion with regards to, when you have a few people, and I have to brag on our Facebook page and the number of people that are following it, it becomes confusing to people if they're seeing other entities with Facebook pages that they thought were the city's, but then maybe they're not, you know, and we're not, certainly not picking on any of them, but our effort has been to try to ratchet back and to get a policy in place that will complete that ratchet back to best practices. As Colleen pointed out, those best practices are going to change over time, but as they currently stand, it's trying to have, do exactly what Surprise, I think Surprise is one of the best examples that we've found of them, their policy isn't 100 pages thick, you know.
They worked with our IT department actually when they created theirs, that's why we have a copy of it.
Right. And so we have some experience with that one, but as we move to a new brand, that new brand will appear in all of, you know, on the website, on all our social media. And the request to have additional ones, additional, whether it's Facebook or Twitter or whatever, for the airport is an example. The airport is a city operation. If you want information about the airport, it's the City of Kingman's. You should go to the City of Kingman's information to get that. You know, and again, not wanting to confuse our citizens and those people wanting to do business with us and knowing that I have, that we have a professional who is more than willing to help make sure that the message is what we hope it, or what it should be. And, you know, again, putting something on Facebook that is just cut and pasted off of another site or another Facebook page may have nothing to do with how we're trying to run an operation. And so we just wanted to share this with you. My commitment to Counselor Staley was, if I didn't, I don't need the council to vote on anything, if I see head nods, if the council wants us to allow additional Facebook pages to departments, then your wishes are command. But knowing that controlling that is going to be up to that department and, you know, Colleen's an army of one, and so just what you would prefer to do going forward. So that's our presentation.
Okay. So, thank you. My comments on this are, first of all, I think it needs to be an all or nothing. Either everybody condenses into one Facebook page, all of these different, you know, Facebook profiles are all on one together, or we continue on the path that we've been on because I don't think it's very fair to say, well, if you didn't make the deadline, now you can't have one, because a lot has happened after this, taking over the airport, all the work that's being done at the industrial park, creating the airport commission. The airport is not represented at all on these Facebook pages. There is no airport and industrial park page. And, you know, one of my, probably my favorite city Facebook page is the Clean City Commissions. And that's just because that appeals to me. I don't really follow the, no offense, the golf course one, because I just, it doesn't affect me in my day-to-day. So what I'm saying is, is that we are going to find there are a lot of people who are interested in information about what's happening at the airport. We have a new facility that's opening, we have a restaurant out there, there are events happening, there's people flying in, you know, I mean, that appeals to a lot of people and they aren't being represented. And so if we go down to one single page, then there needs to be a way for people in these different commissions, people who are in different departments, to get information to whomever is going to post everything.
Right.
So there has, there should be a way for everybody to be able to present information that needs to get out on Facebook and in a fast manner. And so right now, we're not representing the airport or the industrial park. And as their liaison, that is one thing that I was asking for, is how do we make this happen? Because we have a lot of really skilled and passionate people out there and we want to share that with everybody. We want our airport to have that information going out, that a big change has happened and positive things are happening and come and visit us, and then run a hanger and bring your business and come for lunch, you know. I want to see it promoted. And so whether that's just one, or they get their own, or it's through Steve at the airport, I just want to make sure they're represented.
Yeah. No, I get your, I know exactly what you're saying. It's within Steve and his team's power to make that happen.
Okay.
We will provide them with the training, Colleen, some of the slides that she showed you. We've got some great graphic design stuff that can make all of that messaging come to life for people.
Right.
And we're happy to share that. If they want to send it in, our preference would be that they post. Nothing, anytime I write something that's going to be read widely, I always have someone edit it. I know that Colleen is willing to prove something, I'm willing to prove something, and we can, all they have to do is ask, and we will have it on the main website. And I agree with you, it just, in wanting to rock the boat too much, you know, too much change makes people a little bit skittish, but we're headed in that direction, to be completely honest with you, we really are. And the Clean City postings on recycling and trash, I mean, you saw how many people looked at the $3 trash pickup, you know. And so getting, you know, what we're finding on these, I'll call them subsets of our services, is they have 300 people looking at them. And that's not reaching, that's not the reach that we want. We want people to know what's going on at the airport. We don't want just 250 or 500 people. We want the community to know that not only do we run the airport, but these are all the great things that are happening out there. And all that Steve and his team have to do is either dress that up and post it, or send it in, we'll dress it up and post it, and it'll be there immediately. And the more we train our people, the better the messaging's going to be. But again, all they have to do is submit it or tell us that, what they want on there. And like I said, we'll be happy to train them and give them the rights to post if they're, you know, obviously, we don't want, that's our face to the world.
Sure.
We don't want misspellings, we don't want to misuse words, you know, all of that stuff that makes us not as professional as we want to look. And those are all things that Colleen is going to help those folks with. So, yes, sir.
Two things. I think that the branding exercise that we're going to go through and that whole effort, I think that really presents the best opportunity to migrate towards one official source on all these different channels, Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, all that stuff. It's one thing, and you can have, you can build a system where all the departments, you're all putting out multiple pieces of content a day.
Yep.
I think that's achievable. And the second thing I would say is, I believe you guys are working on a dedicated airport website, much like we have for economic development.
Correct.
And that can't get up soon enough.
Right.
Because I agree with Jamie that there needs to be a site where we can celebrate these things. It's a part of telling our own story, and there's so many good companies and so many good things happening out there that people have no idea about.
Right.
I mean, in the aviation industry alone, Goodyear Aviation, you know, the tire company out there, 10 and 1/2 million landings without an incident, they do all the major airlines, they do military. A lot of people don't know that stuff's here, so a way to celebrate that stuff.
Yeah. And our ED site is a good example of that, and we are actively working on the airport website, and you're absolutely right. And there is, in the use of our electronic communications, the website will serve really well, but on the, hey, come and look at, you know, come out to the new, or the air show, or whatever, we have so many people that are tracking and on our main Facebook page that it would just almost be a waste of time to post something on a subcategory when we're reaching so many more people. And again, messaging-wise, we want to send the message that this is part of a City of Kingman's operations, that we're not separate, it is ours, so. So, and I agree with you, the market, as we work through the marketing, or the branding, and we work to market, I think the timing actually lends itself really nicely to the transition and the policy development with that, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody.
That 70% is very impressive, keep it up. Okay, we are now moving to announcements by Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager. Senator Fogg?
Yes. I want to publicly thank Sydney for her service to the community. This is her last council meeting as the city clerk. She is retiring at the end of the week, and I want to thank her publicly for her service to the community. It's been, it started at the Police Department, right? So it's been ongoing, but thank you very much for your service. And I just want to remind everybody that our next council meeting is canceled. We will be at the League of Cities and Towns in Arizona down in Tucson. So we will not have our second meeting this month. So with that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilor Watkins?
I don't have an announcement.
Okay. Councilor, no announcement?
No, I have a request.
Okay. That was like, do you have?
My announcement is actually simple and it's going to go back to my insurance hat that I'm going to wear. We have car windows that are being blown out from the heat, and we have phones and iPads that are blowing up in cars. So please, crack your windows, do not leave things in there, and citizens out there eat this morning, it's legit.
You're welcome to.
I took it last time, you can get this one.
Okay.
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Well, then you allowed me some of the best for last. I'll just announce that today, we were very fortunate to attend the groundbreaking for what's called the Hive, which is the new $3 billion data processing and storage facility that is powered by solar panels. And it was a very lovely event and well-attended by, I think, representatives from Congressman Gosar's office, our representative, Cobb, was there, as was Senator Correlli, and all of us, all of the cities were well-represented. us, all of the cities were well-represented and several of us were representatives, Councilors, Walt Watkins and of course, Kala Keener and Vice Mayor Kelter and myself. And we had a great city team with Manager Foggan and our Economic Development, Gary Kellogg and Bennett Bratley. So it was, it was an opportunity to rub shoulders with royals seriously because Sarah Ferguson was there and she is the Duchess of York and also Tony Robbins. So, but the primary impact there is just the celebration of this type of facility because it is the utilization of a natural resource for something that could be scaled up and used throughout the world really if this is very successful. So I think a good time was had by all and we've got the pictures to prove it. So I'm sure it will be featured on our Facebook. So that was wonderful. In addition, I will say that I would like to thank especially Supervisor Jean Bishop and Gina Cobb, who did great presentations there today and worked so hard, and the county's ED developer, Tammy Ursonbach, who worked with this group to get them to Mojave County very quickly. It's a big deal. And I'd also like to thank Congressman Gosar, who was here last week and held forums in this chamber for opportunity zones, which was nicely attended and helped spread the word about the investment opportunities right here in Kingman and in our region. That was, that was lovely. And they also addressed boroughs. I can't say that that was as relevant to us, but a lot of cities in Mojave County have boroughs walking the streets, believe me. And then the final announcement is that last week we did attend the tri-city council meetings and that is a good forum to have the communication among the cities on important topics, especially we talked about legislative accomplishments this last year. Again, Representative Cobb gave those reports. And we also prepare for things like the census, which we just talked about at this point in this type of group setting. And as the months come past, we're going, we're going to talk much more about it publicly. It's a very important topic for our community. You may already see some things coming out of Bullhead, but believe me, we are all in on it together and we all are working together as county and three cities to address that issue. So that's what I have. Thank you. Thank you. It's a great question. A council request for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments. Have any calendars? Yes, I know, that is your thing.
Tonight, we had a citizen come and ask about putting in a stop sign. And this is actually something I get asked about kind of regularly is people who live on residential streets, they, they want to know how to slow down the traffic. And I think right now, especially as our police department is short-staffed, maybe it's a good time to have a work session item to talk about what somebody in a neighborhood could do to either add a stop sign. I know in other cities they add speed bumps and they also add those medians kind of in the middle. I've been in Phoenix streets where they kind of put in a diamond medium
Yep.
And you have to go around it and it slows you down.
Yep.
So I think that we should be looking at how we could work with the property owners to slow down traffic if they're in an area where it's unsafe.
We would be happy to do a work session on placement of stop signs, how that works, and give you a presentation on what really slows down traffic.
Okay.
Okay? Perfect.
I think, I think people will be happy to hear what they could do.
Yep, great.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other agenda items, Fuss?
I don't think they call them speed bumps anymore, I think they call them traffic calming devices, don't they?
That's what those are. Pick up my car. Okay. Then with no further items, then we can move into executive session where we will discuss the Kingman Crossing Development Agreement. The city attorney requests the council go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38431384 to discuss the development agreement between the City of Kingman and Kingman Regional Medical Center. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I think a motion.
Motion to go into executive session?
I second that.
Motion second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, may. Ayes have it.